Welcome everyone. I'd like to call the order of the Hockington Town Council meeting of July 5th, 2022 to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Do I have a motion to can?
Recommiting in open session?
Yes.
I move, Mr. President, I move that we.
A second.
All in favor?
First eye.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
And Moffat eye, motion passes. Statement by Town Council President and no votes were taken in executive session.
Mr. President, I move the minutes of the executive session be sealed.
Second.
All in favor?
First eye.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
And Moffat eye, the motion passes. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a roll call. Councillor Hurst.
Present.
Councillor Marvel?
Present.
Councillor Davis?
Present.
Councillor Gary?
Present.
Councillor Moffett is present. Up first is the public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak, just go to the podium and state your name, or if you're online, just raise your. Brian, has seen anybody online?
Nope.
All right, not seeing anyone, we will start with acknowledgements and announcements. One second. Brian, do you have a copy of that letter that was in here for the transfer station?
Yeah, it's in there. Well, actually, my email correspondence.
Up first, under acknowledgements and announcements, Hockington residents use the Richmond Transfer Station beginning July 1st, 2022. I'm just going to read this into the, into the record. Dear Hockington residents, we are pleased to announce a new collaboration between the Town of Hockington and the Town of Richmond with regard to residential waste disposal. Please note that if you use a commercial waste hauler and pay for curbside pickup, this agreement does not affect you. As many of you already know, the Town of Hockington has worked with the Town of Wesley for residential waste services for many years and have decided to no longer continue this arrangement. The Town of Hockington, after much research, has decided that it is in the best financial interest of our residents to move away from the Wesley Transfer Station. We also want to note that if any residents feel so inclined and elect to pay for day passes to continue disposing of their waste at the Wesley Transfer Station. Effective July 1st, 2022, the Town of Richmond's Town Hall will be giving out placards to Hockington residents at no annual cost to our residents. Motor vehicle registration is required. The first weekend, Saturday, July 2nd and Sunday, July 3rd, the Town of Richmond will have someone posted at the transfer station to assist with the placard distribution during these regular business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Hockington residents are asked to bring their vehicle registration to receive the placard. It should be noted that there is no annual fee for our residents to acquire a Richmond Transfer Station placard, and all waste bags are accepted. The Richmond Transfer Station will be charging a tipping fee based on the weight of the waste. Hockton residents are encouraged to visit their website for additional information regarding Richmond Transfer Station. We want to thank the Town of Richmond for collaborating with us and encourage our Hockton residents to call us with any questions regarding this new partnership. Up next is the.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say a couple of things about that because I've got a lot of phone calls from people and some emails with some people more on the Ashway side of things, where now they have a long to you, obviously with gas prices. Just to let people know, this wasn't something that the town sought out to do. Westerly had passed an ordinance that changed the way Hockton residents were going to be billed. And they basically didn't give us much room to negotiate or to try to work out an arrangement. They basically said, this is the way it's going to be done. You're going to charge all your residents $50 regardless of whether they use the landfill or not, which would have resulted in about 175,000 to Westerly in revenue from our residents. So we just didn't think it was something that was in the best interest of the town. And I tried to work with them and see if it was something where if a resident, you know, pay for a permit, if you use the landfill, pay the $50. But they, they weren't open to that. It had to be everybody in town was going to have to pay the $50. So of course, we got a lot of pushback from people that already paid for commercial haulers or used the Richmond landfill already. So I reached out to Richmond. It seems like a much better fit for the town as far as the size of the land, the transfer station, the overhead, you know, they have a $200,000 landfill budget a year, whereas Wesley's 3.5 million. So when we're splitting overhead costs and it just seemed like a better match for us. And I realize it's a little bit of an inconvenience for people on the Ashway side of town, but financially, it was, it was hands down the best decision for our residents. So, so I just wanted to give a little justification as to why we went that route. You know, it's not to say that we can't work something out down the road with Wesley, but at this juncture, they didn't want to negotiate with us. So we were just, you know, paid the cards we were dealt and Richmond was, seemed like the best solution.
I agree. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, I just, I want to back up Brian's comments. I fielded a lot of questions on the last four or five days and, you know, there are some people that live on this side of the town that are, you know, kind of upset. And I said probably somewhere down the road, maybe we'll go back to Wesley, but I didn't, we didn't see it prudent as, you know, you're paying a private hauler, then you have to pay $50 on top of that. So that's that. And I think the day pass, I use that term day pass, is what I was told is a $10 fee at Wesley. And you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things. It's like, it's like a Saturday morning ritual. Okay, you pack the truck up, go to dump, cut the grass. I get that part of it, but I think it was the right move to make, you know, like we said, somewhere down the road, we could maybe, you know, work with Wesley, see what happens when the new town council comes in, maybe the reverse it, because I know there are some very angry Wesley residents also.
I would just like to say that I did get my sticker, actually not a sticker per se, it's something I put on your, got on my rearview mirror. It's just a plastic with the Richmond pass in it. I, I probably won't use it much because I do have a hauler, but if you try to get rid of like a mattress or some big item and you know, somebody to pick up truck or somebody that will help you get rid of it and has a certain list of things. So I would, I would recommend it to citizens in the town. Either do your commercial trash hauler, either have him do your mattresses or any big items or have a friend with a pickup truck or something go over to Richmond with that pass. I think that's the best strategy to have. And I commend a town manager for this because I think, and I assume, and it's tough to predict things, but I think that what Wesley's trying to do is probably going to backfire in the end. And they'll probably be forced with the next council down there because at least six of them have to be replaced because of that term limits, that this will probably be revisited. So I would imagine it could only last a short while in Wesley. But anyways, it is what it is today and I think it was a smart move to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, no one else has anything to say? Is there, are we all in agreement with the agenda order? Is there any objection to the agenda order? All right, up next consent agenda. Approve the Town Council meeting minutes of June 20th, 2022.
I make a motion that we approve the Town Council meeting minutes of June 20th, 2022.
All in favor?
First eye.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
And Moffat eye, the motion passes. Up next, hearing, motion, do I have a motion to sit as a licensing board?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
First eye.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
And Moffat eye, motion passes. Brian, do you have someone online there?
Yes.
Yep.
You may have the.
Yes.
I'll check and make sure he's there. He's, he can hear us. You can just state his name for the record.
He's allowed to speak. He's just on mute.
Okay. All right, anyway, a multi-event permit. Open a hearing on an application for a multi-event permit filed by Kevin Sullivan, Little Roadie Lobster LLC, 15A Frontier Road, Ashway, R.I., 02804, property located at 15A Frontier Road and owned by BCP LLC in order to hold various events, including mini golf, weddings, car shows and music, Sunday through Saturdays during normal business hours, 11:30 to 10:00 p.m., 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The application complete and all the waivers?
To be in order and I did receive an email from Chief Palmer. He has no objections to the multi-event.
Okay, is Mr. Sullivan on? Is Mr. Sullivan?
He's on, yep. He just needs to unmute himself.
Yeah, but he's on mute.
Star, star six, unmute.
There he goes. Okay.
I asked him to unmute himself.
I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes, is this, is this Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, sorry, first time doing this. Never used Zoom before.
Could you state your name for the record, sir?
Yes, Kevin Sullivan, representing Little Roadie Lobster.
Okay, do you have anything that you, you want to say or discuss or anything in, in, in relation to this application?
Nothing unless there's any concerns that you want to ask, but.
Sure, let me, so, so I'll just start a discussion here and maybe we can get some questions out of that. Is, is there any discussion in relation to this application from any of the town councilmen? Any concerns, questions or anything?
It's what was there.
Okay, excellent. Well, I mean. Okay, excellent. Well, I mean, just kind of do our due diligence. Um, well, Mr. Sullivan, we don't have any questions, concerns or anything. It seems like things have been going, you know, pretty good over there for a while, you know, since we uh, approved the uh, you know, your license and everything over there. So um, with that being said, having no discussion, I will actually ask if there's a motion to approve this permit.
Um, Scott Billharish, I move that the uh, request for a multi-event permit be granted to uh, as filed by Kevin Sullivan, Little Roadie Lobster LLC, fifteen A Frontier Road, Ashway, R I, for property located at fifteen A Frontier Road and owned by B C P LLC in order to hold various events, including mini golf, weddings, car shows and music, Sundays through Saturdays during normal business hours, eleven thirty AM to ten o'clock PM.
A second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Yuri, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Mr. Sullivan, your permit is approved.
Thank you.
Mister President, I move we adjourn as a licensing board and reconvene as council.
Second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Yuri, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next, uh, new business. Discuss and consider and possibly vote to adopt a resolution in support of legislation restoring funding for the state aid to libraries to the full twenty-five percent. I'm going to read that resolution. Um, the town of, uh, town of Hockington, R I, resolution in support of legislation restoring funding first for the state aid to libraries to the full twenty-five percent. Be resolved by the town council of Hockington as follows. Whereas for many people, public libraries are the only means of access to books, computer services, technology, training and all forms of media essential for fulfilling the productive lives. And whereas free public libraries are essential to the general enlightenment of citizens and democracy and provided for the cultural, educational, informational and research needs of all citizens. And whereas the constitution of the state of Rhode Island, Article twelve, section one states that it shall be the duty of the general assembly to promote public schools and public libraries and to adopt all means which it deems necessary and proper to secure to the people the advantages and opportunities of education and public library services. And whereas in recognition of the importance of libraries in our society, Rhode Island General Assembly has set the level of state aid for library services at a minimum of twenty-five percent of the amount spent from local tax funds and library private endowment. And whereas the governor's proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget funds state aid to libraries at twenty-two point three eight percent, which is three thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars less than a Hockington, the town of Hockington would receive as a required twenty-five percent level. And whereas the town of Hockington, Rhode Island supports fully funding state aid to libraries at the twenty-five percent level in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved by the Hockington Town Council as follows. That the Hockington Town Council, at the request of the Hockington Library Board of Trustees, does hereby support legislation which will restore funding for state aid to libraries for the full twenty-five percent required in Rhode Island General Law Section twenty-nine dash six dash two subsection A, and urges the Hockington delegation to the General Assembly to work diligently for its passage. That this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage by the Hockington Town Council. Do I have a motion?
Mister President, I move adoption of this resolution.
A second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Yuri, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes.
Can I comment?
Please.
I think the problem with this, and this is thing I know Lisa has known, I've talked about this for years, but it, and it shows how the state of Rhode Island uh, should be doing more for our school districts because it includes public schools and libraries. So I would hope that when we challenge the state for more state funding, that we stress Article twelve, section one, not only for, you know, public libraries, but also uh, in regard to uh, our public schools, which I think they shortchanged. And I don't know how, how long we've been talking about the regionalization bonus, for example, or, and uh, and I could go on and on, but I don't want to get beyond the agenda item, but since uh, Article twelve, section one is out of the agenda, uh, we've let the state uh, not fulfill their true responsibilities to the cities and towns of Rhode Island and the children of Rhode Island as well as the property taxpayers. So I think that deserves to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Up next, number two under new business. Website, uh, discuss, consider and possibly vote to award the bids for the following R F P. Website redesign, hosting and content management system.
Good evening, council. Uh, as you're aware, we've been in the market, uh, or been trying to get a new website for the town. Ours is very dated and uh, it just needs a, a total do-over redesign, posting, uh, the whole nine. So we've spent quite some time uh, researching vendors and uh, we've put an R F P out and received three bids. And I believe, yeah, so Civic Plus, Red Elephant and uh, Acua Digital. And they, they varied quite a bit in price. Um, and after consulting with the IT director, Jeff uh, Fernet, we decided that Civic Plus would be the best fit for the town. Uh, they have an extensive background with working with municipalities, I think.
How many even states? I believe nine municipalities in the state.
So, so they've already worked with nine municipalities in the state. They, their templates are far superior. I'll let Jeff talk to some of the, the pros and cons to the various vendors, but um, I, I concur with Jeff that Civic Plus would be the best fit. And, and you know, again, I'll let him speak to it, but.
Excellent.
Good evening. So um,
Jeff, just say your name for the record, just so those people.
Oh, sorry, Jeff Fernet, uh, IT Director, Town of Hockington. So like Brian was saying, we looked at the three vendors, Civic Plus, Red Elephant and Acu Data. Um, Civic Plus came in at, now I'll talk to us about year one cost, uh, approximately eleven thousand dollars. Uh, Red Elephant, about eighty-eight hundred dollars and Acu to Data, uh, almost fifty-six thousand. So big, big span in numbers there. Um, so, yeah, no, there was not an extra zero. So uh, one of the biggest things about uh, my choice or recommendation in Civic Plus, they work with over seventy-five hundred local governments across the U S and Canada. Um, I believe it was nine in just Rhode Island. So very um, just with that one number in Rhode Island, uh, I went out and researched all nine sites. Um, some of the best sites in the state, uh, just as an example, Wesley.
There you go.
So, I mean, you know, their website is very nice. If you look at it, um, very good site. They have a superior set of just web templates. So just those templates will save time during implementation. So it's not a whole, let's sit down and look at everything and pick through and build from scratch. So their templates were really what pushed me there. Um, information security, top notch. So I think those are the three main points that I looked at and came down to the decision of choosing uh, Civic Plus. I don't know if there's any other questions. They do have a whole round of other things that can plug in around the site. So, you know, that's another benefit.
I do have a question because Red Elephant was cheaper, so I have to ask.
So, yeah.
You get for your money or not?
So one of the, one of the other things, the, the yearly, I think that's the number you're talking about. So year over year, um, is also, so the eighty-eight hundred dollars uh, for year one for Red Elephant compared to the eleven thousand dollars for Civic Plus. It was the um, templates, the build out and what the sites truly can do later on. So we use a system called Code Red. They have an application that's very similar that we can actually integrate into the platform. They have a ci, a system called Civic Clerk that we can integrate into the system. It becomes part of the platform. So not only will we get a website, but there are things that we can bring in. That is one of the biggest differences about Civic Plus. It's not just a website. It has things that can surround it that the town can gain benefit from. Now that is more money down the road, but those are things that the town does need. It creates the efficiencies down the road. There is a lot of things that I do that take up time, that get pushed in that others, you know, and it, things like agendas. We have a very mixed batch of agendas. All of those can be templated. All those minutes are all written differently. They can be templated so that we'll all look alike. One of the things about the community communication committee is how do we get information out to our residents? It can be all done within Civic Plus. It's a one-stop shop. That's one of the biggest things about Civic Plus. One-stop shop. It does everything.
Because your time's money too.
Everyone's time. It's not just me. Everyone's time is, is money. Everyone's time is money.
And the support, I, I think Jeff had mentioned, and he can speak to this also, I, I believe the support that Red Elephant was a smaller company. Um, I think they had like, if I'm not mistaken.
I think there was like nine or ten employees inside of Red Elephant. Inside of um, Civic Plus, there's, I do believe they have a little over a thousand employees. So if I pick up the phone for a website issue at three o'clock in the morning, the ability to get assistance from Red Elephant is very small to get.
I think that Wesley site's impressive. I've, I've been on.
Yeah, and it's just an example. Boroughville, you can look at Boroughville. They're, they're also a vendor or a customer, sorry.
So one other thing that's probably worth mentioning, uh, is that this has been funded through the C I P. As I'm sure you remember, um, the last two years, we've incrementally funded it and we have enough money to implement that code red type platform. So that's something I'm going to try to do on, on our first go. Um, and the base amount, so it would be in addition to the bid that is out there now that, that you guys just for the ten thousand.
And what do we have in, in the C I P for? What have we?
We, we have nineteen thousand, uh, five hundred. So I, I believe that additional module would be around like four or five thousand, I think, to implement. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to uh, put out there was, uh, and, and this was after doing research and speaking with a lot of these vendors and, and Jeff, I think it's well worth our money to hire a photographer. And we've been working on soliciting an RFQ or an RFP to get someone out there, a professional photographer to take photos. And in my experience, these sites, it doesn't matter how well the site is put together. If you have some low quality pic, pictures up there, it just looks garbage. So I think it's well worth your money to invest and get we're soliciting for a hundred high, high resolution photos. Uh, twenty-five percent of them are going to come from historic sites in Hockington and the rest of them. So I've already had someone go out um, and do a favor and they got drone shots of the Cranfield Field Playground. So it's just going to add a lot to, I think, our website and it's just going to be a lot more visibly pleasing uh, to, to see and professionally uh, done. So uh, just thought I'd throw that out there. That's something we're working on to kind of assist while we're designing the website with Civic Plus. In the background, we'd be getting those photos done and and we asked them to span that over all four seasons so that we just didn't have a hundred photos from August, you know, so they're going to do it over a year time and um, I, I think it's going to be a, a good investment.
Excellent. All right. So um, are there any more questions, any more discussion in regards to this?
The only thing I'm going to say is thank you, Jeff, for doing research on this. It's definitely something we can move forward with, you know, get some nice pictures, build it up. Yeah, I hear all the time, well, I don't look at the website. You should.
You should. If you're online, you have a phone, you, you know, and you can.
Now that, you know, if you want to do this, make it excellent, world-class, I'm all in favor of it.
I do have a question.
Sure.
In your RFP and your requirements, would you include um, making a mobile version?
The site is fully mobile. It's fully mobile, uh, ready. So if you use a iPhone eleven, it'll size to an eleven, a thirteen. Uh, if you're on an iPad-sized device, it'll size to that. Um, you know, it's fully mobile ready, as they say. Uh, so it'll, it'll work with that. One of the things that Brian did say, uh, he brought up, uh, this, what was Code Red. So it's called Civic Ready. Um, it does alerting email, text, voice, Twitter, Facebook and to its own mobile app. So if the resident signs up and gets their information in there category-based, so for instance, town council meetings. If they sign up and click the town council meeting option, as soon as an agenda gets filed, an alert goes out and it goes out to whatever method they choose, whether it's email or text. If it's set up for Facebook, which we're going to do, if we go this route, it'll automatically post. So there's, once again, time-saving, costs more money, but the time-saving is it'll post. So if a agenda is filed by Lisa, it automatically posts. It doesn't wait for someone from I T to post it or put it on Facebook. It does it. If there's a revision, it posts it again.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that, just, just. In a nutshell, you, you get what you pay for. You know, if you want to save some money, you know, you can get a, a, you know, uh, a mom and pop shop, put together a website and it's going to, it's going to have limitations. So um, I, I think this is a good middle of the road, you know, it's not fifty-six thousand dollars to implement. Um, you know, we certainly, you know, we're, we're not.
No, no, I think that was one of the first things we all talked about for the most part was is important to have a, a website that was, you know, easy on the eyes, you know, to navigate, to find, to have options for things. And kind of just, like Jeff, just kind of spread it out over, you know, not just be so here, you know, where you have your tabs and sections, I can.
Boxes.
Boxes and.
Boxes.
Right, and just stuff like that. So I think um, we'll be able to put more stuff on it, I'm sure too, right? I mean, we're going to have more space to do things on it. Um, you know, I mean, even you know, potentially having pages for the, you know, land trust, the conservation commission and certain other departments.
User-friendly is a big, big point.
One hundred percent, or, or, or a spot to help answer questions, you know, maybe, you know, maybe these answers will help you not have to pick up the phone and call somebody or whatever.
Ask, ask the, you know.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. All right. A, any further questions, discussion? If not hearing any, do I have a second?
Second.
Did anybody make a motion?
I make a motion uh, that the Hockington Town Council award the bid for website redesign, hosting and CMS services to Civic Plus for year one cost ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Year two cost two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and year three cost two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
A second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Yuri, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Want to thank Jeff for putting this together.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, number three, discuss and possibly vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Constellation from December two thousand and twenty-two to December two thousand and twenty-five to write, to provide electricity to the town of Hockington at a fixed rate as determined on July sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes, so I guess the saying, when it rains, it pours, right? So with fuel prices going up, it seems that everybody's getting hit with you know, inflation and, and the increased cost of fuel. Well, that applies to electrical and it just so happens that our three-year contract expires on December thirty-first of this year. We've reached out or we're in close contact, um, as my role in the finance office and still uh, Liz is in close contact with a company called Power Options. And they work closely with Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns through a REAP program, Rhode Island Energy Aggregation Program. And what they do is they consolidate all the usage of the municipalities in the state to get the best rate available. Uh, so it's a really good service that they provide the, the unit, uh, cities and towns of Rhode Island. And uh, this uh, it consists of thirty-six Rhode Island cities and towns currently use the, the rep, the REAP program. So Hockington has part, um, participated in this program for I want to say at least six years, maybe nine. I think this might be our third or, or fourth contract. Uh, right now, the energy provider would be Constellation and they're offering us a fixed rate currently at uh, twelve cents per kilowatt, which is a, it's a, it's a pretty. it's a pretty substantial increase uh from what we had before. Um, however, if we waited, so it's gonna take effect as of January first. However, if we waited any longer to lock in, there's legislation that's being passed. Um, and I wanted to get more information on it. I I actually sat through a presentation on it that Constellation did. And I've reached out to them to get more information. I unfortunately didn't hear back from them. But there was legislation being passed that was going to allow energy providers, so uh Rhode Island Energy, to increase the fees that they charge um in electric bills. So some of the, I believe, like the maintenance cost uh in a nutshell, it was going to increase if we waited till after seven one to lock into a fixed rate. We're gonna see a significant jump. So we had to act quickly and renew our rate. So we want to lock lock in with the rate that we were offered now, which again, won't take effect till January first. Uh, that rate being twelve cents or uh point one two one five kilo uh per kilowatt. Um, that rate, however, if things change in the near future, we can renegotiate. So I'll keep a close eye on it. Hopefully, things come down in the next year. Uh, but we're not stuck with that, say, for a three-year window. If things do come back down, we can reach out to them and and renegotiate.
Uh, one question. Uh, Constellation is not the same people that do the streetlights, are they?
No, no, uh, there's Prism. Prism does our maintenance for, yeah.
Yeah, I was just just curious. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All right, not hearing any. Do I have a motion? To authorize the town manager?
Mister Mister President, I make a motion the to town manager entering a three-year agreement with Constellation from December twenty twenty-two to December twenty twenty-five to provide electricity to the town of Hopkins at a fixed rate as determined on July sixth, twenty twenty-two.
A second.
All in all in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
In Moffat, aye, the motion passes. Up next, unfinished business. Uh, discussion of possible action concerning accessory dwelling unit legislation passed by the general assembly. Um, I had put this on the agenda because I wanted to have a council discussion in in regards to it. Uh, I want to know whether the council, you know, wants to leave it as it is, or if we want to take any action to to um to not have any accessory dwellings based on the legislation. Because I personally think the legislation is horrible. Um, I'm I'm sure it does um you know, help increase, you know, the affordable housing situation and and all other stuff, but um it's just not um it's just not really gonna be a good thing. So uh, does does anyone have anything?
I I would say that the problem a lot of times, the accessory dwelling is for people who have elderly parents or in-laws and for them to be taken care of by by relatives uh wh- while they're alive. And the problem becomes that when they die, you have an empty uh empty space. And I know there's been concern in areas where you would have rent that out. If somebody with children, then there's also a school cost. I know I'm always thinking about money, but that's another element uh that's always been a concern of people. Uh, but uh I'm willing to listen.
My concern, Scott, is is the manner in which uh the legislation is. It's, you know, Steve can kind of give a little bit of background to it too, but it's it's kind of an all or nothing scenario where it's you have to either follow what the state is allowing in this, which is, you know, allowing accessory dwellings on on, you know, detached also. We're we're not talking about building on a garage. We're talking about building a separate building and not having to upgrade their well.
Well.
But the option, hold on one second, Scott, is the state is saying you have to vote either or. You can't have accessory dwellings. You know, and if any limitations on that the state says you can.
So I understand what you're saying is accessory dwelling is not actually attached to the the main residence.
Exactly. No, it 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 can now be detached. And there is a a limit on on the lot size, which I think is about twenty-two thousand square.
I wonder when that started because I knew I had an aunt in Wesley uh that uh who is deceased and her 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 daughter is deceased now, but she lived in a uh one of those type of situations uh years ago, but uh, you know, a lot of times I don't think it should be permitted because it can be abused and uh.
Well, this, I I could speak to sort of the background on this. So years ago, the state's zoning enabling act authorized what you would consider like an in-law apartment, which was a, you know, unit that was inside the primary dwelling, part of the same building, limited to someone actually related to you residing in. Uh, then that requirement of having someone related uh in it was lifted maybe five, 10 years ago. And so this uh in-law apartment idea was was expanded and now you could have this uh dwelling unit that you could basically rent to anyone. Uh, this new law takes all of the town's control over this way. Um, so it's not, you could ev- every single person in the town would have the right to turn their barn or their garage or their pool house into a house. And rent it out. Um, so like the population of the town could like double overnight in theory, if everyone. It doesn't have to be owner occupied and it doesn't have to be a family member living in it. So you could turn your garage into a house and rent out your garage and your house and like take off and be an absentee landlord. And the, you know, you could go from having four people living on that lot to eight. And they could, and everyone in town could do that by right.
And and you could also have a lot and build two houses. And in essence.
In theory, yes.
In theory, you could do that.
And also the Brushy Brook Housing Development. They originally decided that that the affordable housing was going to be over the garage and this would be perfect for them.
Well, now.
We didn't really want.
Under this new statute, like that is, they could design these to be built to to be done this way. And um and so what, the way I have read this bill is there is uh the key language that I saw was on page eleven of the um bill that's in your packets. And it's
What line?
Forty-five, twenty-four, seventy-three A. And it says, any municipality which chooses to permit accessory dwelling units shall not impose any excessive restrictions. And so they don't tell us what excessive means. So that could mean anything. Um, and and so basically, it's take it or leave it. You take like unlimited, unregulated. The town has no control over this whatsoever, or you ban them altogether, I think, are your only options.
So some of the reasoning behind why the state wants to do this for the most part is because they want to, A, they think they already have potential like affordable housing units, like that could be created through non-conforming uses that are already not. A lot of town, some towns I know, like for instance Wesley, was a big discussion where they had a lot of non-conforming apartments. So how would they do that? Well, they could kind of sneak it through this way and make them all conforming now. Because accessory dwellings, this law will allow that to happen. Um, it kind of clean up a mess for them, but it will also help a talent Wesley alleviate their affordable housing shortages. So then, this is what the big goal is. When you have a legislature, a lot of times you like to throw money out, you know, and incentives and tax credits to build all this stuff. But so they look at it as, well, we don't have to draw any money for any of this if we can help people, they can smack accessory dwellings wherever they want. Because then now you, your homeowner or somebody's gonna gonna do it. You know what I mean? And and that's how it's gonna move forward. So it's kind of a loophole to kind of help them, you know, alleviate some of the affordable.
Mister, if I could, I I don't, I don't normally weigh in on my opinions about policy matters, but like this this is a piece of legislation that probably is great in some towns and not in other towns. And it is uh just, I I think that, you know, for the more rural towns that have you know, lot of, you know, don't have much population density, you want to try to, you know, keep it that way. Uh, this, take, you lose your ability to to do that. Every, every single lot could like have two or three or twice as many people living on it. Uh, by right.
I like to agree. I I I think that this is, as you say, is is directed by the state legislators to to favor, you know, the bigger cities. Um, but, you know, once again, it seems they're ignoring the rural.
Right. So and and if Hopkinton wanted to have a reasonable uh accessory dwelling unit ordinance that fit Hopkinton.
Can't.
You can't. It's it's take it or have none. And I don't, I mean, I personally, like I think it's counterproductive if you put a town in a position where they'd rather not have them. If the goal is to increase the amount of affordable housing, because what you have now is a situation where uh, you know, if if some towns don't want to comply with all of these things that are being mandated, their only option is to say none, zero.
Right.
Um, they're not allowed anymore.
Yeah, and I and I think this all or nothing piece just has a really, potentially has a really negative impact on our rural character. It goes against our comprehensive.
I mean, I think so. I mean, definitely for the most part, you know, because they're, they also want to allow these to formal housing, which that's fine, you know what I mean?
Yeah, sure.
Not this way, you know, I mean, this way is just, you know, it's, I mean, the fact that, you know, you could have half an acre have a twenty-five hundred square foot housing, smack up at twenty-four hundred fifty square foot.
Mm-hmm.
You know. Detached, you know, accessory dwelling.
And one thing that's in here too is that the town has no ability to tell you that you need to increase your septic capacity or in well, not like right in there. The town cannot go in there and say no because of issues having to do with the well or septic. Like it's, it's really the town's ability to like have oversight and regulate this is is non-existent under this legislation.
Mr. President, yes.
So 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 what I think we should do is I think we should, there's a couple options. Steve and I talked about a couple. One is either um rewrite an ordinance saying, you know, no, which if it's either no, it's not going to be that big of an ordinance.
Right. Well, I I think that, I mean, if that's the direction the council wants to go, then you would need to just amend the ordinance to say that these are not allowed.
Right. And then we obviously would submit it to the planning board for a recommendation.
So so someone more familiar with the, you know, that works most more closely with the zoning ordinance than I do would would need to go in there and and figure out what needs to be changed, but.
Okay, I got a few things I want to say. Number one, do we know where the status is of this legislation?
Sitting on the governor's desk.
On the governor's desk, uh, Mr. President, I make a motion that and I like to speak to the motion. I like to make a motion that we uh submit a letter to uh Governor Daniel McKee opposing this legislation with the uh a letter under your signature, the concerns expressed here tonight. And I would like to I make that a motion, but I like to speak on my motion.
Sure. Probably have another one for the next half.
Okay.
So, I mean, is it, does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Uh, Mister Mister President, uh, very frankly, I being the political junkie I am, I I couldn't help but notice it was Representative Ackerman and Chikachi. But usually it's an indication uh the Mr. Chikachi is the Speaker of the House, but he's also was the lawyer for the Brushy Brook proposal. So I, I'm very good at collect uh connecting political dots. It's just an obsession I have. But the thing that concerns me is the serious nature of this and local control. And I think that local officials at Hopkin and generally use prudent uh consideration. So I uh believe that uh the state needs to work more with the cities and towns and its local officials dealing with land use issues and they should know the consequences of their actions because uh uh towns like Hopkin, and I don't know wherever he rank and maybe Brian will know and he might not know. I always was acquainted with the fact that the town of Hopkinton as a municipality was always very high in the number of affordable housing, housing stock in our town as it goes compared to other cities and towns in Rhode Island. So I don't think Hopkin really has anything to apologize for considering our track record. So I would uh I made the motion, it was seconded. Uh, I hope that you do contact the governor. And I would urge uh the people in the audience. Uh, you can contact the governor uh on his website and urge him to uh veto, uh, I believe, uh, the correct legislation that's going before him. Tool uh two twenty twenty-two eight seven ninety, not seven nine four two substitute B uh substitute B. Uh, and I would urge the citizens to bring, read that online. And the state legislature, the Rhode Island General Assembly has uh a website you can check legislation, but I would urge them as quickly as possible to contact Governor McKee through his website or or call the governor's office urging a veto of this legislation and state and the reasons. And I look forward to the letter being submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, just to kind of, um, so the last comprehensive plan had Hopkinton's affordable housing at seven and a half percent. Uh, the state recommendation or where where the state wants you at is ten percent.
It's a very good.
So we are compared to towns like Richmond, who I think are like three and four percent.
Yeah, you know, I I really resent the fact that a lot of people take the town of Hopkin into task when you really look at the record of this town. There were people of both parties, independents and uh volunteers on boards and commissions and uh citizens. This town has come a long ways despite despite the fact that a lot of people would put Hopkin down and saying we're against progress and all that nonsense. Town of Hopkin has got a darn good record and we have a good staff and moves this town forward. We have volunteers on boards and commissions and town councils, even if we disagree. Uh, we have had progress in this town for a number of years. So I uh I just take uh case with people who tend to ridicule the town of Hopkin because we're doing a damn good job. Uh, sometimes we fall short, but I think if you look at the collective record, we have a damn good record. And I shouldn't use the word damn, but I will, I will not ensure it. So uh I let you be. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Um, so.
So you're going to vote on sending a letter, but then we need to do.
So so, yeah, so we carry the conversation. So you're talking about, so what do we do? Like, what are what are our options? Steve, do you want to kind of speak to some options or?
Well, I I mean, if the direction the council wants to go is amending the zoning ordinance, then that process always starts by getting an advisory opinion from the planning board. Um, and as of right now, there's no ordinance uh introduced. So some decision has to be made as to who would be assigned to um to work on that. Um, so you could refer this to the planning board. You could possibly request a um work session with the planning board to uh work through this. Um, but that that generally is the first step is refer to the planning board so they can give you an opinion as to whether uh this would be consistent or not with the comprehensive plan and the town's zoning ordinance.
But just a point of procedure, I think that um the request for the letter was was brought up and seconded, but I don't believe.
Yeah, we haven't voted yet.
I I I think that if it's before the governor. The the logical thing is to ask him to veto it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the thing is that uh it it concerns me that when I see uh Chikachi's name on there, and he's the speaker of the Rhode Island House of Representatives, and a lot of people think the speaker is the most powerful official in Rhode Island. The the speaker has a little more juice than everybody in this room. Everybody in the town of Hopkin, whether we'd like to admit that or not. So uh I'm I'm concerned about it and I think we should send the letter. I mean.
Okay. All right. So so we have that, we have a a a.
Okay. All right. So, so we have that, we have a, a second. We just didn't take a vote, all in favor of sending a letter.
First, I.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
And Moffat eye, that motion passes. So let's just continue with what you were saying.
Sure. I, I mean, I, I think that, right. I mean, if, if you had a ordinance that someone had introduced tonight, then you would set a hearing date for the council to have a public hearing and you would refer it to the planning board. The planning board would have 45 days and you're supposed to vote within 60. Um, that's how zoning ordinance amendment, uh, timeline is. There is no ordinance right now. Um, so you could either refer it to the planning board or maybe request a workshop with them, but somebody's got a drafted ordinance to be introduced.
But don't we have, we already have.
We have to have approval too by the town council to.
But isn't there already an ordinance that says that the, that it has to be related? I mean, I thought we had a, um.
Well, but the town's ordinance is, is overridden by the state law. If this.
So you have to write it over again?
Well, I mean, the, the town could not enforce an ordinance that was more restrictive. This is the state law.
So then what are we doing?
So, so we make an ordinance to not allow.
I mean, your only option is to allow them to the full extent that the state says in this bill or ban them completely.
Okay.
Um, those, those I think are the, I mean, at least, I mean, that is, that is the way I, I mean, there's no court decisions on this legislation. It's brand new, but that's the way I read it.
Sure. Um, Lisa or Brian, both had your hands up.
There is an accessory family dwelling ordinance on the book. So wouldn't you not just repeal that?
Well, that probably is part, at least part of what needs to be done, but, uh, you know, someone has to, to do that legwork.
Right. So who do you recommend you think, I mean, uh, Tom, I mean.
I was gonna say, is that something that you, I know with previous with other ordinances, we've worked on that.
I do know if you do have a workshop with the planning board, we might be able to come to some sort of agreement on maybe how we should do the ordinance. I don't know procedurally, you know, that's something that, I mean, play more work with the town.
I mean, at least as far as this, as far as the solicitor's office goes, uh, Herr Vaghi would be the person that's most intimately, uh, familiar with the zoning ordinance. Um, otherwise I would say that that would be something that normally would be referred to either the planning or the building and zoning department.
I mean, if that's a good starting.
Yeah. I just, I don't myself personally work with the zoning ordinance enough that I don't know.
Sure. I mean.
Exactly what.
Yeah. So let's put them in contact together and then we'll get something. In the meantime, can we, uh, special. All right. So it just says discussion of possibly action. Okay. So, so we can take action on how we want to do it. So, so, uh, so what action would we take here presently term?
Um, well, you could ask the town manager to assign this task to someone, uh, drafting an ordinance. Uh, you could refer it to the planning board to ask for their, uh, a policy opinion about whether, uh, this, you know, this new legislation would be consistent with the, uh, the comprehensive plan.
I don't want to leave too many unanswered questions.
Right. Well, I, I understand you don't, you know, whatever you do, you don't want to waste, uh, time. Um, so you could certainly refer it to the planning board for study, um, and also assign someone the task of writing.
About some input from the, the town planner too, eh?
Yeah, that's.
Right. Yeah, yeah. We would have everybody, if it was going to be done internally, we'd have everybody.
But I would suggest you want the planning board to, you know, review that legislation and, and give an opinion as to, you know, if they feel it's consistent or not.
So a policy.
With the comprehensive plan.
Advisory?
Oh, well, I mean, just, I mean, their, their opinion about what, what the town's policy. Um, yeah, I mean, their advisory opinion as to is this, um, state mandate consistent with the town's.
So tonight we can authorize Brian to get the ball rolling as far as this ordinance goes. And can we also ask the planning board for a advisory recommendation too? You can send it over to the planning.
Um.
For Sherry to come up with something to send it over to them so that they actually have something to.
Right. I mean, if you, if you need to start the process of amending the ordinance, you do need an ordinance.
Well, I mean, what about this precise, Steve, right? Is that if the state's ordinance trumps all ordinance?
Also, but the, but the, the states, um, I mean, not the states, the, um, well, the, the statute that governs this, it also does say that if, if the ordinance originates with the town's, uh, planning board, that it doesn't have to go through that review process. So you could refer it to them for study and for them to participate in drafting it. Uh, and then they could send the final draft here and you could have a public hearing on it. Um, so I would do all those things.
So do we have any discussion on that? I mean, we think it's wise to have somebody, uh, work on this ordinance to.
I think we, yeah, I think they wouldn't.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So do we want to, uh, so I, I think in our bylaws, town council, right? We, to, to authorize anytime to, for an ordinance, we need a council. So, um, so anyone make a, want to make a motion to approve Ryan, um, assigning the ordinance here?
Mr. President, I move that the town manager be directed to address an ordinance dealing with this topic, dealing, uh, with, uh, dwellings, uh. But these, this, uh, I would draw it. I, Mr. President, I make a motion that the town council direct the town manager to refer to, uh, appropriate boards or commissions or staff as well as himself to address the issue of, uh, dwellings and the consequences of 22 slash H 7942 substitute B and any other related, uh, uh, topics.
A second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
And Moffat eye, motion passes.
You got your homework assignment. I hope you deliver.
So let's, so how are we going to, so, so what is our next step with the planning board?
Well, I would, so you've authorized Brian to get the ball rolling on getting an ordinance drafted. I would also send it to the, I mean, you, do you want to send it to the planning board now or do you want to wait until the ordinance has been drafted?
We probably should wait for the ordinance. I mean, and that's just my opinion because then.
Yeah, they'll know what they have.
Okay.
They'll know what they have, but I, I would also.
Do you want to maybe just ask to have the ordinance ready within a certain number of days? I, I just.
What, uh, I just.
Put it this way, okay? Hold, hold, hold on, hold on. What's this ordinance say? When's the effective date it starts?
It says here, this act will take effect upon passage and would apply to property assessed on and after December 31st, 2022.
All right. So, um, I say.
Yeah. I mean, it's not going to be that work because we're just basically.
I, I don't think it would be a very complex one.
It's gonna be pretty much.
I think it probably is striking some things out and maybe putting a line in the use table that says this use is not allowed.
Right.
Um, I, I don't think it's a complex.
Yeah.
Ordinance.
So when, when would you?
60 days? Uh, shorter than that probably?
I, I don't want to do, I don't, I wouldn't know, I don't want to suggest something that's too burdensome on the, on the staff.
It's manageable. We can get it done by next council meeting.
I mean, that's two weeks from now. I say.
Maybe August 1?
Let's do August 1, but in the meantime, I, I say we get a copy of this, this law as a correspondence from the council, planning board, or however you can possibly do that. Just let the planner know that, hey, like planning board needs to like, you know, don't just wait for us to send it to them. Maybe kind of sneak a peek at it a little bit.
When's, when does the planning board meet? And then when's the next meeting?
They're a month. They're, they're in August. Oh, oh, town.
August 3rd. So we want to have something done. So if they, they would need it, what, three days prior to get it?
Well, if Brian, if Brian can work with whoever's going to be working on this and have it done in time, then it could be referred to the planning board for their August meeting.
Perfect.
So why don't you maybe just by vote, refer it to them for their August meeting? That might be.
Right. And then we'll have it done.
Yeah.
So we're going to refer, um, an accessory dwelling ordinance.
So, right. So the, so the town staff will have the ordinance drafted by August 1 and it will be immediately referred to planning for them to, uh, consider and give their advisory opinion.
Right. But they won't be able to give it at their first meeting because it's.
Yeah, they usually lead a week ahead of time.
Is that, okay. Well, I don't want to mess up anyone's timing.
They're big on the whole month, the month thing now. It's not their whole.
Well, it could be just immediately referred to them at their next available agenda.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, well, I'm trying to think. So you, it's supposed to be introduced here and then referred to them, but if it's the town staff that are generating it.
Then we can introduce it. I mean, as long as we can squeeze it in on the agenda, you know?
As long as you satisfy that requirement, they review it and give you their opinion before the council has a public hearing on it. I think you've satisfied the, the requirement.
So we don't need to vote on that. We, we need to vote to send it to the planning board for their August.
I think you should.
Okay.
Or for, at least for the next, you know, the next available agenda after the ordinance is ready for them to review.
All right. If anybody understood most of that, I mean, I understood it, but I typically don't make motions. So, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion, but if, want to make a motion, Bob?
Um, if I understand it correctly. So, so we're moving to, uh, send the ordinance, the draft ordinance to the planning board for an.
Right. So you're asking, you're referring it to them for their advisory opinion on the next available agenda they have after it's been drafted by the town staff.
Okay. So I'll move that once we draft or once the town staff has drafted an ordinance or accessory dwellings in Hopkinton, that we refer it to the planning board, uh, for a discussion and, uh, advisory opinion at their next, uh, available meeting.
Counselor Hurst, second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Gary eye.
Gary eye and Moffat eye, motion passes. I think that's everything we need to do on that.
That was a tongue twister.
Well, this is, yeah. I mean, it's. Let me keep you honest. Um, all right. So up next, under, uh, unfinished business discussion on the impact of Hopkinton concerning solar legislation passed by the general assembly. Tiana, next time you can say, hey, Steve, want to scoop me up front and we'll, we'll be up to the beginning of the day. Okay?
No, it's fine.
Going, oh my God, I should have.
I'm always last. I'm used to it.
Well, just think of all the things you. Got that inside scoop.
Good evening. My name's Tiana. I am the tax assessor for Hopkinton. I'm here once again to talk about solar legislation. Um, House Bill 8220 sub A passed both House and Senate. It's currently on Governor McKee's desk. I haven't gotten a notification that he signed it yet, so that's where it stays for now. Um, looking over the legislation, it's pretty much the same as I've discussed previously. My calculation is pretty much the same. Um, it's about $11 million, um, that Hopkinton will lose per year, every year. And that's based on.
Assessed value.
Yes. And that is based on the projects being fully up and running. Um, not any of the, you know, in progress or just approved. Yeah. Um, but I did want to cover a couple of like vague ambiguities that are in the legislation for you guys. Um, one, in the legislation, it doesn't mention this in the actual legislation, but on the summary page, it said that, um, farmland is limited for 20%. So anything less than 20% that's converted from farmland to housing, a solar array could not be reclassified or revalued. Um, that is not mentioned in the legislation at all. So I don't know, depending on what exactly is passed, I don't know if that is going to be a part of the legislation, but my figure, my calculation includes that 20% limitation. Um, another issue is that, um, the legislation states all assessments of real property with renewable energy resources thereon shall revert to the last assessed value immediately prior to the renewable developers purchasing, leasing, or otherwise acquiring any interest in the real property. So what this could mean is a developer buys a piece of par, like a parcel with intent to put a solar array on it, has to go through the process, goes through a revaluation cycle. But I have to revert that classification and the previous assessed value to a previous revaluation cycle. So I am not even allowed to assess it properly and fairly compared to everybody else in town. Um, and that, those are the big issues. The others are things I've mentioned before. Being part of the farm forest open space, not being able to reclassify that either. Um, Steve, you look like you have.
I have a question. No. So, so a commercial property didn't have to go through a rezone, a, a buy right, you know, commercial. Are they able to revert back to whatever the land was before it was commercial because it has a solar array on it?
No, like if it was previously commercial and then a solar developer bought it, we could assess it as commercial what it was before. But we can't assess it for the 45,000 per acre, which is what we do for solar arrays. But a lot of the projects in Hopkinton have gotten like a rezone. So I have to revert it back to residential or there's on Skunk Hill, that project, that's going to be farm and forest. And I can't reclassify that with this legislation. And they're going to be taxed at $115 per acre and $300 per acre.
Less than me.
Mm-hmm. Cause they were part of the farm forest open space program.
Yeah.
And I have to revert it back to before the developer took interest in it.
Number one.
Which is mind boggling.
Mm-hmm.
I want to say, did Brian Kennedy vote for that legislation?
I don't know. I looked for Westerly because I'm a Westerly resident. So I'm sorry. I don't know off the top of my head.
I try, I'll find out.
And, and I also have another.
Sure.
You know, you, you, you segmentize things, you know? So from this point of view, we're talking about this legislation.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, we got the same guys out there suing us. For that.
For this, yes. So, because one of their points at tax board review was this proposed legislation is that they don't think it's fair that quote unquote, we're taxing them twice. I don't agree that we are taxing them twice, but that's, that was one of their arguments at tax board.
I'd like to know what legal, if somebody's suing you, why do you have to lay down and let them stop the two? That's what I feel.
You know, you know.
I just.
The bottom line is this.
Other alternatives does, does this town have for somebody who doesn't want to pay what they agreed to pay?
If, if the governor signs this bill, then it's the state law.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right. And, 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 and it goes to being state legislators do what state legislatures do. I mean, that's, you know, they.
That word, obvious.
Well, not even that. I mean, I mean, well, we're going to lose over what do you call, I mean, they're, they're not paying a whole, a whole ton of money. They're just all benefiting from it somehow, some way.
Um, the bottom line is that I'll find out about how Brian Kennedy is, but Brian Kennedy is.
He would be here. I invited him. I had Lisa ask him to be here tonight to answer to it.
Brian Kennedy is speaker pro tem of the Rhode Island House of Representatives and, and Chikachi determines all the leadership position because he's a speaker.
Right.
I'll let that fact speak for itself, but I'll find out because I checked with my Republican sources.
He voted for it.
He voted for it.
So. Probably have a screenshot of the vote on my phone.
So anyways, I will, I will be, I will check on it and all I can say is follow the votes.
I don't, I don't understand how you would vote for something that is going to cost the town money and your job is pretty much to, obviously on the state levels to maybe bring some here.
You gotta be, if you want to be the spot of the leadership, if you want to be speaker of the house, you don't please the people of Hopkin, you please the speaker. That's how the game is played.
Also tells you when you have, uh, immunity also from voting out. Scott, you know that too.
We're talking about the state of Rhode Island.
At this point, I would just like to know what legal alternatives does this town have for this situation? You know, why are we bending over backwards when somebody is suing us?
So let me just say this, Sharon, you had said something that they, they may have promised in a meeting, uh, in their voice, but it wasn't in writing. There was no, a tax treaty, there was no tax agreement. We've could have, they could have signed a tax agreement saying that what's coming out of your mouth is actually going to. That never happened. So there you go. There's a whole bunch of other reasons to with this classified property. These, these projects aren't going to be up. there you go. There's a whole bunch of other reasons to with this classified property. These, these projects aren't going to be up and running for a while, for a long time. So they're going to sit there and pay these large amount of taxes on properties that they're not getting any revenue from. They're not making any money. And they have friends in the legislature, lawyers who, 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 I mean, out of the whole state of Rhode Island, I mean, really, I mean, a state legislator has to be an attorney for an unregulated, you know, solar, you know, where they let it to the towns to do whatever, and the state didn't want to bite that apple and say, set some regulations as far as solar went, some guidelines and stuff. They let each and every town decide how they were going to write their ordinances for it. And hurry up and get there before they write one. So and when you're a state legislator, right, it's kind of insider trading. I mean, they know what's going to happen. They know what laws are going to be introduced, when stuff's going to happen. It's, it's. I could talk for days. We have cities with more people than here. They have one police department, one school district. We have thirty-nine police departments, thirty-nine small districts. I mean, it goes on and on. It's just.
Well.
It's a big pot of mess.
I'd just like to know what alternatives we have.
Well, I did read a, um, an article in the Providence Journal. I don't remember who said it, but they said they recommend talking to solar companies to charge more per kilowatt than the five dollar per kilowatt. But I don't think that they would be open to that considering the five dollar per kilowatt is a Rhode Island general law.
A lot of these developers are, are, may, may have to pony up for a lot of these interconnection costs and all kinds of other stuff because they, so all I'm saying is they're not, they're not giving away money. They're not going to say, hey.
No, I understand.
It's not. I mean, I just want to be real about. No, not at all.
No, no. Okay. All right. You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, I, i- 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 and, and that's my point is that there's, they know what they're doing. They're just nursing this whole thing through.
Just follow the campaign contributions.
This is not even, they can't convince, don't even, they're, they pale in. It is not. I've looked at all their. But you want to know how much they help?
Well, he, he is a hard.
As this is another bill on the governor's desk.
This is on others' desk.
Can, can we approach this the same way and, and write a letter urging him to veto this, this bill?
He's a former town council person. I mean, he may.
So procedurally, we can do that because I think here it's just discussed, but.
I think we already go for the House and the Senate.
Right. Yeah. You've already written to the legislature. You could, you could do that. Yes.
Let's just, you know, as an affirmation from the council, make a motion to, as.
Yeah. So.
Some sort of solidarity on that.
So, so I'll make a motion that we write a letter to Governor McKee, asking or urging him to veto Bill twenty-two or eighty-two twenty sub A.
And just including your motion with a motion that I just proposed and was adopted and.
Yeah, we can send both letters.
We can send both. Make a motion to add that to the.
Well, it can be a separate letter.
I think the letter that Tiana had written before was very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
It could be adapted to be sent to the, the governor's office.
Yep.
It was separate.
Is that, is that. Was that motion sufficient?
I believe so.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel eye.
Davis sign.
Gary eye.
And Mafad eye, motion passes. Tiana, I have one question.
Yeah.
I have, I should, so eleven million dollars. I mean, how would you, I mean, so how would you figure out how much that is per year? Eleven million assessed value.
That's per year.
Using this year's tax rate, it's about two hundred thousand dollars.
A year for me, a year.
A year. So times twenty.
Right.
Or twenty-five, however long the projects last.
It's about four million bucks, five million bucks. And that's just one.
No, 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 that's, that's every, yeah. Um, there are three projects that are the biggest, one hundred Alton Bradford Road, that's a yearly loss of two point six or approximately fifty thousand dollars of tax revenue. Three ten Main Street, that's two point eight six million dollars or fifty-three thousand of tax revenue. And then the projects on one forty-five Skunk Hill, that's a yearly two million dollar loss or approximately thirty-seven thousand.
Right by saying that, that the, the example you used for the Skunk Hill one.
Mm-hmm.
That it would be assessed as a farm forest and open space?
So that one is, oh, yes.
So.
Essentially, there's a, um, let me pull it open. There is, um, I can't do math real well in my head, but eighteen acres was for farmland and then seventy-six point one six is for forest. So the farmland, I could potentially revalue and reclassify to three thousand dollars. But that seventy-six, which is the bulk of it, would have to stay as forestry. And also, um, just to make you guys aware, I'm not sure if you guys know, but farm and forestry to be, to be a part of the farm or the forestry program, you have to actually get, um, approval from the state. So with forestry especially, you have to go every five years to get a forestry certificate and do a forestry plan and like spend money in order to get this reduction in value. So these solar arrays will continue to be taxed at a hundred and fifteen dollars per acre because this legislation doesn't let me reclassify it to anything. So it has to be continued to be taxed at a hundred and fifteen dollars per acre, even if they don't have that classification and approval from the state.
Even though you can cut forests down and then call it forest.
Exactly.
We're going to cut it down, but then we're going to assess it. All right. Cool. Where we're at. So if there's nothing else on this, if anybody else has anything else to add to this, um, discussion, um, the impacts regarding solar legislation. All right. With that being said, next up is a public comment. If you would like to say anything, just under the microphone, say your name to the record.
Good evening, Joe Moreau. Old Depot Road. You know, maybe I, uh, I didn't hear this, but all of the solar hearings and meetings that I went to since, uh, two thousand and eighteen, all I heard was the revenue that the town was going to make. And it's incredible where we're looking at eleven million dollars loss, two hundred thousand dollar loss. In two thousand and eighteen, there was a project, there was a thirty-five million dollar project. At the time, there were federal incentives where the developer would get thirty percent, uh, in rebates. So this particular developer, if the project was approved, would have made ten and a half million dollars. And look at where we are today. Uh, there's a couple of projects that have faced delay after delay, and it's because of the interconnect and they're waiting for certain things to happen. And we should not, uh, suffer because of what they're doing. And I appreciate what the council's doing. I'd also like to thank Jeff for the, uh, improvements that he's made to our website. Um, I've looked at the Westley website several times as well as Childstone. It get, it gets back to the CIP and the lack of funding that our town has, uh, to get this project where it should be. And I'm glad that we're moving, uh, in that direction at this point. I want to thank the town council again for the money that was approved from the contingency fund for the flagpole. I would suggest that you check it out when you leave. Uh, also the new signage that's on the front of this building, uh, it's been a big improvement. Uh, also, I want to thank Brian for his work, um, with this, uh, whole, um, transfer station issues. Um, it's unfortunate that some people in Ashway have to travel to, uh, Richmond Transfer Station at this point. But some of the same residents that live on the Richmond-Hopkinton line also travel to Crandall Field, um, for an example. So, um, but the bottom line is I believe that the town manager, as well as the council, has to look at what's financially best for the town. And that decision that was made in my mind is a no brainer. Uh, I've used that Richmond Transfer Station several times. I had a couple of residents call me, uh, about this and I suggested that they use it. Um, I was probably the first one in line on, uh, July first at the Richmond Town Hall to get my sticker. And there's no issues with that. So this one resident that ended up using the, uh, Richmond Transfer Station also pays, I believe, about forty-three dollars a month for a private contract to take his trash. He figured it out after using the Richmond Transfer Station and in fact, he'll save about twenty-something dollars a month based on the amount of trash that he uses and they weigh it up there. So there is a savings, uh, instead of everyone being charged the, uh, the fifty dollars. Uh, I also agree with the council on the accessory dwelling. I mean, how ridiculous would that be? That as our council president mentioned, where you can put on, uh, you know, two or three buildings, uh, on your property, but, um, I never thought we'd be talking about the solar issues again, but I just can't believe the money that it's going to cost our town if this goes through. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone online? Brian, that's, we got their hand raised or anything?
Person, but their hand is not raised.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President, uh, I move the Hopkins Town Council adjourned.
My second. All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel eye.
Davis sign.
Gary eye.
And Mafad eye, motion passes, meeting as adjourned.